I'd like to call to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. There we go. The agenda. The old business is a public hearing for zoning amendment application 0320-1 submitted by Ryland Inc. That is again tabled. So we will put that aside and start on with new business, which is really old business because we've been discussing it for a few weeks, a month. Work session on possible zoning text amendments related to the RCD, which is residential conservation development, and micro distilleries. So Heather, how would you like to do this?
Well, I know last month we started talking about some of the design features that were called out in the plan update and the consensus that I was kind of hearing from the group is that we want to remain flexible, you know, as far as how maybe some of these standards. And I think that it would be a good exercise that you kind of went through them and heard from you guys as far as what you thought would be important to add in as criteria. It could be some of these, all of these, none of these, or something else that you want to see. But I think we need to decide whether or not it's something that, you know, this is probably just a preliminary, you know, new business again, but some idea of what might be requirement that you want to see in every single RCD or something that you would like to see if it's possible.
Okay. Well, then I'll start. Let's go into the RCD from the comprehensive plan update of 2015 and go with number one, repairing setbacks. Comments, suggestions?
Well, I'm going to, I'm sorry, I'm going to correct you, Mr. Chairman, just skipping down number four under the RCD design features.
We don't want to do the other ones?
Well, we've talked about repairing setbacks.
Well, do we want to put it in?
It's already in.
Oh, it's already in?
Well, I mean, it is as far as all development has to apply by those repairing setbacks. We don't have anything different in the RCD versus any of the other designs.
And we don't have to?
No, we don't have to.
That's a question, okay.
But I guess that is something, you know, that is a good point. I mean, we could, we could add that in to the RCD saying that all repairing setbacks and repairing areas shall be within the open space, or maybe they shouldn't be, or if you have some additional ideas about, you know, those repairing areas that...
Should we count repairing setbacks as?
As open space.
As open space?
That is something else that you can debate.
Now, that's typically for a stream that's already there, right? Or is it for one that we put in, or both?
It could either, right? Could be either.
Be both.
Right. So any existing water course that meets the criteria of having a defined bank would be a designated water course, whether it's perennial or ephemeral or intermittent, if the Army Corps of Infantry or Regulates it, then the setback would apply and depending on the drainage area, you know, that the setback there is anywhere from 25 feet to 100 feet.
Yeah, however wide.
And it doesn't have to be flowing water because I happen to have a creek in my backyard. It's not a creek, it's a natural ravine that goes along.
Natural spill.
And we have repairing setback rules on that, even though there's no water in it except when the snow melts or it rains really hard.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a water pathway at certain times, but other than that, it's dry. But there's still a setback on our property.
On your property, okay. So should we count that as?
As open space?
As open space.
I don't think so because it's really your property, it's not part of the conservation area. You just have to stay back from it so far on your property. So you can't build something on your property close to the pathway, but it's still your property, it's not in the common grounds. So I would think it would be not counted as part of that.
Well, it depends on where the creek is located. You know, it would depend, if the creek is located in, you know, in the open space, then, you know, the riparian setback should count towards the open, I mean, if...
True.
If a creek or a dry run, you know, or an intermittent or whatever, however you want to phrase it, runs into a private lot.
Yeah, that's different, right.
Then the riparian setback should only be determined by the property owner, not by the, that shouldn't it be, because it wouldn't be included in the open space anyway.
I totally agree.
Because it's already a part of a, it's already part of a lot.
It exists.
You know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
So I wouldn't, I don't, I would think based on that, we have, there is a, there is a general, there is a general, what do you want to call it, regulation regarding setback, you know, regarding repairing setbacks. If it's on a private piece of property, you can't build within a certain distance, so you're covered. And if it's, and if it's a stream that's in open space, who cares what the riparian setback is because it's in the open space? Nobody's going to be building, and nobody's going to be infringing on that riparian setback anyway, unless there would be something like a pavilion or somewhat walking trail or something where they were trying to put through, and then they would have to obey the riparian setback. But that's governed by the riparian setback, would have nothing to do with...
Correct.
...the open space and/or, you know, the use, the usage. So I think you're, I think with the riparian setbacks as they're stated, I think we're covered, that there would be nothing really to consider.
That's right.
That's my opinion, but that's, you know, that's how I see it.
That sounds good to me, so.
Sorry, somehow we got disconnected on the phone, so I had a little call, so I must have broken that.
Well, all I said, Heather, to recap, I said basically, we were asking whether, the question was, should we include riparian setbacks as part of the open space?
Right.
And what I said was, if it's on a piece of private property, the riparian setback has to be followed by the landowner, they can't build anything, they can't infringe on that riparian setback. So it's covered there. And if the creek or whatever is in the open space, riparian setback is really kind of moot because it's in open space, so nobody's going to be building anywhere, infringing on the riparian setback anyway. So the riparian setback, if it's in the open space, should be, should be included as a part of the open space because why deduct something out of the open space that really is kind of a non-issue? Right? Does that make sense, or am I?
Yes.
I'm asking Heather.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that it can go either way. I mean, you want to protect the riparian areas and the wetlands and the streams by keeping them in the open space because then you're less likely to be impacted by property owners. At the same time, is it usable, open space? I can kind of see the area coming from higher up, you know, if you can just throw all the wetlands in the open space, that wouldn't have been developable anyway, why should that count for open space? I don't know. I wouldn't want to make any changes where we're going to start having developments to the wetlands.
But the wetlands, the wetlands...
Yeah, I think that's what we want to protect.
Heather, the wetlands delineation isn't the same as a riparian setback, though, correct?
Correct, okay, yeah, in this I've been fully explained, on the riparian setbacks, if there is a wetland that's connected to that stream, then it captures the wetland itself and then the riparian setback is extended to the boundary of the wetland. And then depending on what the category of the wetland is, if it's a one, two, or three, there could be an additional setback on that wetland. But isolated wetlands, so not connected to any streams, just, we don't have any setbacks. There's no riparian setback, wetland setback, or however you want to call it. A developer could feel very up to it or mitigate, mitigate it.
And I think that would, then that would go to the brainstorming session of, do we want to include, do we want to allow wetlands to be included as a part of the open space, right? Because it sits right now, wetlands could be part of the open space.
Yeah.
Towards the calculation.
Right.
So do we want, so I guess then the question would be, do you want to include wetlands? Do we want to allow wetlands to be included as a part of the open space for the bonus? Because like Heather said, you're not building on a wetlands anyway, so it's really unbuildable at that point, so you wouldn't, why would you want to include something that otherwise wouldn't be buildable in a...
With the exception, Andy, that somebody could fill it in. They could bring in, fill and fill that wetland in and...
But then they have to pay to do that.
I know.
You know, they would have to pay the Army.
But it could be done, depending on the topography of the land, they could bulldoze dirt over there and take off some high ground and put it in there. I think we want to encourage wetlands as part of the conservation. I think wetlands should be considered part of the open area, personally.
Part of the open area, I agree with that, but not part of a buildable lot?
No, no, but it's part of, if you have 40 acres and three acres is wetland and you leave that three acres, it should count as the part of the...
Part of the open area.
The open area, yeah.
Okay, right?
I believe it.
Right.
Because it's something I think we want to encourage.
You want to encourage mosquito growth?
Well...
Hey.
What's not a virus, is that what we're...
We do now. Look at all the people building by the Menner Marsh.
Yeah, especially if there's no water coming in or water going out, it's just sitting there stagnant. I mean, that's mosquito, mosquito heaven, really.
Part of nature, though.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
All right. Now, number two on here is yield plans, I'm going to pass on that for right now, okay? Number three, I think we can discuss this pretty quickly, construction in proximity to gas or oil wells. Consider prohibiting the construction of new homes within a specified distance. I think we all agree, but now, what's the distance?
Doesn't the state regulate that already?
Well, we talked about that last time and David Ashy said that they do, but a capped well can be as bad as a open well.
Oh, true.
You might not know it's even there.
True.
But if you did, you ought to be so far from it, whatever the required distance So I think our regulation should say whether it's active or inactive, gas well or oil well.
Right, right.
And whatever that distance is.
I don't have that in front of me, what does it say now?
Well, it says the state, the state has preempted the location of new wells relative to existing homes.
Okay.
But not the location of new homes relative to wells. So there's a, there's a difference there.
Okay.
And I personally, if you want to build your house by a, by a gas well, I think that's your business. I mean, that's up to you. I mean, who is, who are you to say you shouldn't do that?
Well, we're supposed to be considered health, aren't we supposed to be considered health, safety, and welfare of the community as part of our...
Those are pretty broad terms.
Well, that's true, but I think anyone knows that gas well can always have a potential of blowing up and killing people.
Do they?
There's been a lot of ones that take cap to them.
You know, that's the question.
That's right.
I know what, I know why this was created, I was here when this, when this was created. And I know who was the impetus behind creating this, okay? So I don't know, I, there was, there was a very specific agenda in, in creating this verbiage when this happened. Because there was, there's already regulations from the state of Ohio. This was kind of thrown in as an additional thing. And I'm not, like I said, I don't know, you know, if you want to build your house by the railroad tracks, is, should we deny you that ability to build your house by the railroad tracks because there could be a, there could be a derailment with toxic chemicals?
But on the other hand, Andy...
You build your house next to railroad tracks, that's kind of your business.
But if you buy, but if you buy a lot or buy a home that was produced by a developer and it's on the market, you may not know it's back there, especially if it's capped off. And, you know...
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be a part of the disclosures?
I don't know.
Aren't there, aren't there laws that prevent?
I don't know.
You know, I mean, if there's a, if there's an abandoned mineshaft on your property and the builder sells you the lot and doesn't tell you about the abandoned mineshaft, don't they, aren't they, isn't there an obligation legally to tell you that, or no?
What if, what if it's...
You buying at your own risk?
What if it's not on the property, but it's 20 feet off the property? I don't know, I don't know what the...
Right.
...rules are on that. Because the developer could then say, there's no gas or oil well in this property.
On this property.
But it's 10 feet away, 20 feet away, you know.
What's your point with that?
My point would be, we ought to specify how far we think it should be from the property. Not just the dwelling, but probably the property.
Well, Rich, I don't think we can regulate how close a piece of property could be to a gas well.
Well, then maybe this is...
You know, if we wanted to pursue this, would be, you know, the location of a home in relation to an existing...
I got you.
...well. This isn't anything that we've looked at so far, so I have no idea what kind of distance that, you know, anybody would recommend it.
Well, this was all a result of the, of the property over off of Concord Hampton. Okay, right over here.
Oh, yeah.
They had the well on it.
Across the street.
Remember the property between Concord Hampton and 90?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
There was nothing there, and then Osborn put a well in. And so as a, as a issue, we needed to include some verbiage regarding building a house in relationship to a well. I think the intent there was to limit density because they wanted to spread out an area around that well that was put in after the fact to prevent houses being built there. Not, I don't think, I really honestly don't think safety was an issue, I think it was a, it was a wedge to create less dense development. You know what I'm saying? There was, there was an ulterior motive in that. That's how that, that's what prompted that. So you understand that, that behind the scenes on that. I don't know, Frank, you were here.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody else was a part of it.
Yeah.
Rich, were you a part, when we were looking at that property? Were you a part of the zoning commission?
Rich Peters.
Rich Peters.
Yeah, yeah, I was. Yeah, because we're looking at apartments back there.
Right.
That's when we had quite a discussion. I did. There's also two gas wells, though, up off of Gerbeld Road and what's now being developed as Stone Ridge Case Two, that have been capped off now, but there were two of them up there. And we discussed that, I believe, four or five years ago when we made that an RCD for Stone Ridge.
Okay, more discussion on that, but so let's table that one also, that item.
Okay, yeah, we have to look into that.
We have to do some...
That's something that we really haven't been working on.
Okay. All right, down to number four.
Yay.
Yay. RCD design features. Consider requiring or permitting as options several subdivision design tools. Maybe a toolbox of creative approaches with a developer may propose to make a better neighborhood design and/or mitigate certain impacts. Okay, following is a brainstorming list, so let's go right down to A. Limit the number of lots in a row, that is, require an open space between every eight to 10 sublots, yes, no, numbers, whatever. Should that be a requirement or pick, or a suggestion in the RCD?
Well, one of the things that I've read on RCDs is it's good to have a pathway, most of the conserved land is at the back of the properties, as it should be, because you can't have it in front of the houses for the most part. But to be able to get to it from, you know, walking to it, you need to have an access point, and if you had a open corridor that went back to the conservation area, you could put it between existing houses. You had a little one like that over on Barchester to get to that little park back there, there was a little right-of-way.
Winchester.
Right next to Rust.
Went back to Concord Park.
Right.
Off of Hus.
Now, that was just a pathway, but to have an open section there, maybe so many feet wide with trees and so forth, it would kind of enhance the area. I think so, too.
I happen to think limiting the number of homes or the lots in a row, requiring an open space break is a good idea. Not, I mean aesthetically, to forget utilitarian use, just aesthetically, I think having an occasional open lot along the street is, I think that, I think that, I think it plays well to the idea of RCD. I do.
I agree.
And I, and I'm not talking a right-of-way, I'm not talking something 100 feet wide, well, 100 feet would be a lot, right? Usually typically on a half acre, what is 190 to 100 feet width, right?
Half acre?
On a half acre lot, 90, 90 feet?
Half acre, I think is 100.
So, yeah, 90 or 100 feet somewhere in that ballpark is on a, on a half acre lot width-wise, regardless.
100 by 200 is...
Right. Yeah, there you go. So you got, you know, 100, 100 foot width, you know, I think that would be a nice, that would certainly lend itself to hack, to an access path or trail, or just as a break in the uniformity of the street, looking down, seeing an open lot here and there, just be like in a development where there's an undeveloped lot. Yeah, looks good, it's not, not a bad thing.
Unless, Andy, what do you do with, maybe you could do some form of landscaping, but what if it was just a field? And now you have this wild grass and weeds growing there.
It's open space.
And it wouldn't look as nice as having some trees in there, but...
If it's open space, nobody should be infringing on it, that we should be doing anything to it, right?
True.
Should be in its natural state. So if it's a field, part of a field, then it's, or high grass, it's part of the woods, then it's going to be woods all the way to the street. And like, you would clear whatever, the right-of-way for utilities and things like that, so whatever that setback would, or that, that right-of-way is for the, for utilities for, you know, in the front, but, you know, you would clear that, but that's where it would stop, you know, so.
Could that be a form of a suggestion on our part, though? Because we'd want to see how the plan, give them an idea, and then when they came in with a plan, we'd see if they were going to...
It's not a requirement. You know, if we come, if we, if we, if we compose a list of, say, we've got through P, not knowing my alphabet by numbers, but I don't know how many P is, but that's more than 10, I know that. So if we did that, let's say we had 10, say we, out of these, through P, we picked 10 items that we're all comfortable with, we want to include, and say, and then we say, you've got to meet seven of these 10. You pick, you, it's an a la carte menu, here's A, B, C, D, you know, you pick the, you pick out of these, if you can hit all 10, even better, but you got to hit at least seven, or six of the 10, or whatever. And then, and that could be one of the things they could pick.
Yeah.
You know, and then we take a look at the, what they do pick, if they, if they kind of take the easy way, they push the easy button and take all the real simple stuff, then we can put their feet to the fire and say, well, you know, we'd really like to see you do something a little more meaningful. You know, maybe this open lot, you know, every so many lots would be a nice addition, would make us view your proposal in a more favorable way. But again, it's, it's, this is, we can't require, I think we'd run into some legal issues, so we just, we say, here's some, here's some tools, we ask that you try to incorporate X number of these tools in your, in your proposal. I think that's a great way, it's, we're not pinning them into a corner.
Yep, I like that.
We're giving them some freedom of choice in terms of what they want to do and to develop their development. And, and some of these, some of the things we may ask them to adhere to, quite frankly, you know, we've seen it, there may be some developments that aren't, that they, that don't fit that particular suggestion, you know, even, so we have to give them some leeway.
Sure.
Say you've got to do this, that, or the other thing, and then there may be a situation where, well, they, this, really this lot, this plan doesn't lend itself to that one particular issue, we should be, allow them to kind of scratch that one and substitute something else.
And that goes with the smorgasbord.
Right.
Here's your list, take a pick.
Chinese menu, Dave, you know, a little bit from column A, a little bit from column B.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, I think that some of these, you're going to have to, you know, if there's ones that you definitely want incorporated in every single plan, we're going to have to write them as such, like you shelves, these things.
Right, right.
Okay.
That should be a requirement.
And then the other thought is, the ones that, you know, the other idea is this, this list of items that might be discretionary, you know, here's, here's what we would consider, you know, we might consider adding into our purpose and intent statements at the beginning of the chapter, where we talk about, like the MAC, you know, that the purpose of the district is to avoid development on destruction, in destruction of sensitive natural resource areas, and this can be achieved by, and then maybe we could list, you know, a few items that might fall under that category. That way, when you're reviewing any new plans, you know, you can go through the checklist of shelves, but then you can also look at the purpose of the district and some very specific recommendations and kind of check those off in your mind, saying, did the developer do any of these things that we asked him to? You know, and then therefore, if a project comes in front of you, you know, and, you know, you can kind of run through that list and say, well, they're not really meeting this purpose because you didn't do any of these things that we asked you to do, that weren't necessarily required, but this is what we're looking for in order to meet these kind of, these goals. So I don't know that we can pick a number and say, like, like you were suggesting, you know, pick seven out of 10, you know, I'm not sure that that would work.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's, we have to be careful because you, if, there may be projects or designs that might fit an RCD application, but they won't, they wouldn't be able to hit seven out of 10.
Right.
They maybe they could hit five out of 10.
So like with this first one about limiting the number of lots in a row, this is something you want, I mean, I think, what are your thoughts on picking a hard number? That might not work in every single case, or, or do we, are you guys thinking that this is...
No, I, I don't think we should have a number, but I think we should say something like, require an open space break within your development.
Yeah, because the lay of the land is going to determine that in some cases.
Sure, and it might be a ravine where it's unbuildable, so you have that open space in there, and it does that. So, but I don't think we ought to put in a number, but...
Unless we have to drill down. This is something you want to water, though?
I could say at least one, a minimum one, or whatever it is. I think we encourage more.
Well, let me see.
I think we leave it open-ended and just say that...
Suggestion?
That, I, I think A is a keeper, number one, I like it, I think it's a good idea. I think that we leave it at, we require, we want you to limit the number of lots in a row, and that, and with an open space break. And in that way, it leaves it up, they, they can see that that's our expectations, and where they put those is, like you said, Rich, is up to the kind of the, the, the...
The lay of the land, yeah.
But if, but let them know that we expect them to leave at least some open lots without running, because if you start putting numbers on it, then all of a sudden, well, what if we say, every eight lots, you got to have an open lot? Okay, well, what if eight lots takes you to something that is a, a problem, and the ninth lot, you can't really leave it as an open lot? You know, because of the street layout, or however it's, you know, they put it together, so.
So we don't put a number in?
Right, we just say, we'd like you to leave some open lots as a break, and it'll get in, it'll be included in the open space calculation. But you need to leave some open lots along the street, however many that number, and then we look at the plan, and if they've got a bunch of them, then great, if they don't, if they don't have any, then we have to say, you could have...
You didn't meet it, so.
Right.
Just put in there, we like to have a consideration, depending on the degree of the property and its enhancements, to given that open space failure. So don't put a number, but say, a deep consideration would be, would be appreciated, for example, of open space and conservation development.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would agree with Andy, I'd say it's a requirement, not a consideration. It's a requirement, but you don't want to limit the innovation of a designer or the layout of the land. So these expectations are a requirement, to limit the number of lots in a row and have open space breaks, something to that effect, so it's a requirement.
Very good, very good, okay.
The way it's worded in this article that I found, it says maximum access to open space by private users should be required. Maximum access to open space would be bricked periodically, be part of that.
Sounds good.
Same page, A.
Okay, B, B, at the top of page 45. Alternately, alternatively, require that some front setbacks... Alternately, alternatively, require that some front setbacks be deeper, breaking the uniform setback line of houses.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, my question is, this makes sense for anything, any type of design? Does it not?
Meaning R1?
Yeah.
R3, whatever.
Right, right. Not, not to discourage it here, I, I, I like, I like the concept of varying setbacks.
So do I.
From, from, from an aesthetic pleasing, it's RCD, but I was just, what, R1 is fifty foot, and thou shall be fifty foot, um, minimum. So, I'm just curious why is that a consideration for any residential district?
Okay. Have you seen it in practical application?
Where I live, fifty foot setbacks. I mean, they're all uniformly. I like the idea of the break.
Well, we reached that earlier, uh, when we were talking about maybe A, uh, or previous. If you have a house that's set back, you're gonna have a grassy area up front. And I don't see that. Ever. So, I don't know, I mean, I'd like the idea, but I don't know if you wanna have a driveway here that is, you know, fifty feet back, and a driveway next lot is a hundred and ten feet back. So, but I haven't seen that, because that, that front area is gonna be considered open space.
No.
No.
It's part of a.
No, it's not, it's part of a single family lot.
See, I'm, I'm giving you an example.
So it's not open space?
No, I'll give you an example. There's a, there's a, I live in Summerwood. On Summerwood Drive, there's a creek that runs through on Summerwood, just past Forest Valley. And there's a home, the home that is right up against that creek, they created a variance to set that house way in the back of the lot. All the other homes are way up to the front of lots. Every, as a matter of fact, I think all of the homes in the development are in, in the normal location, except this one lot, the house that's way in the back. Kinda weird. It's kind of a weird look. Now, if you have that staggered throughout the entire development?
Right.
Might not be so bad.
Yeah.
But when you have.
One.
However many houses you have in Summerwood, and I don't know the exact numbers, quite a few now, and there's only one house that sits way in the back of the lot, it's kind of a strange situation.
Yeah, I, I agree, Andy, but as, as a design feature, this is what we're talking about here, the recommendation for this comprehensive plan update, they gave it some thought, that to provide a design feature, doesn't, and I'm saying not a requirement, but it's a design feature, if the designer comes up with a concept that shows variability, improve the aesthetics of the development, especially in RCD, because they're all, again, envisioning quarter acre lots, small, you know, envisioning an RCD. So they're closer together theoretically, because they're trying to preserve, so having them closer together than all, it looks like a institutional type development is supposed to, so it allows, it allows the designer, the developer to create some, be innovative and creative, just as a, as a design feature. I think that's what we're talking about, there's a design feature.
But on the flip side of that, though, you lose privacy if your, your neighbor's house is back behind, setback behind yours, and they're back here, and their, their front yard's looking at everything you do in your backyard.
Yeah, uh, and, and, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about a variance of fifty to a hundred. The suggestion here, the suggestion here is.
Oh, just ten feet or?
Yeah, the suggestion here is not that type of variability, but.
So we get specific with regards to the variation? Because like Rich said, you want, you know, what's, what's the marketability of a house that's back, that's looking in basically into the back of the house of their next door neighbor?
Oh, right.
You know, or they're, they're, they're equal, they're, they're even with their, their deck or their pool, in the back, in their backyard.
There are several of those on Proudly Ridge, and I look at those and say, I don't like that.
Well, then, like you said, Rich, before, the lay of the land may dictate the setback as that.
And it could, yeah.
Party in Summerwood, so, again, and then maybe that's because it's open spaces on that lot. Probably not, but not likely.
Because when you drop down to a quarter acre.
Yeah, right.
You don't have a whole heck of a lot of.
You don't have a whole lot of setback.
Between the front and back, you know?
Well, that, that's true, too.
Front and backyard, you know, between the front and back lots.
Yeah, that's true.
Clearances.
It might work more with, well, maybe.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Half acre, maybe. I think you got that, you've got the, you've got the ability, I think you got a little bit of room to play with on half acre. You get down to a quarter acre, you don't have a whole heck of a lot of depth.
Yeah.
You know? If you're going with a ninety foot, what's, what's a quarter acre, not with a ninety foot wide lot.
Yeah, true, yep.
And you're not, you're not talking about a whole lot of space from the street to the back end lot line. Right?
No, I agree, I like things that are basically, when you're talking about conservation zoning, the main objective is, it is the land itself and its, its beauty, and you wanna keep as much nature there. So staggering a home, or putting the homes in such a way that you still maintain that, you know, visually, that's what I look as the objective. So you should have that flexibility to be able to do that.
Well, actually, the, the way it's written now, I mean, they could do that. The code just dictates a, a minimum.
A minimum.
Say it, it, it is the setback line, so, um, some, even though we have thirty foot minimum setback, I've seen a lot of, of the RCDs where you have the half acre, where the developers' deed is stripping it to a forty foot setback, yet they're all, all on the same setback, they're not varying anything, but they've, they've chosen to do a later setback, so that's something that you wanna see, then you probably need to write it in there and let people that are looking at the code know, it's definitely an asset to the middle of the video. But otherwise, I find this, you know, can be a new thing, saying, you can step back for your thoughts.
Yeah, you want the development to look unique, I mean, that the object of the whole thing is conservation development. You know, you don't like to go into a development as, everything looks the same, the houses are all looking the same, I mean, all the way around, I think you've just, you haven't achieved the object of what we're trying to do. When you see that, all that uniformity in there, the flexibility, like I mentioned in our last meeting, is what I'm trying to promote as an obje, as an objective for this type of development.
So, so Heather, you have a good point, is the minimum setback, so rather than say require, maybe deeper, uh, again, as a design feature, could we say, uh, consider variable setbacks?
Yeah, yeah.
Just consider variable setbacks?
Yeah, fifty, I mean, I, I don't know, we wanna put a number on it.
Right, you wanna put a number.
Ten feet, twenty feet, fifteen feet?
Well, if you say variable, here again, you're allowing the flexibility with the plan, they're gonna come in and, and create it. And they have to bring it in front of us anyway.
Anyway.
We have to see if it has achieved that, that goal we're looking for.
So maybe you oughta say, consider that some front setbacks be varied between houses, between lots, breaking the uniform setback line of houses. And I think they, they all see the, the, the line of houses, because that's what everything is coming in as, right? That's how they're coming in.
That's right, yeah.
So, we don't like that.
No.
Okay. So that's a consider. Uh, item C, consider larger lots or setbacks at the intersection of a new street with an existing street, and/or where new homes are in view of the existing development of a different character.
Had that happen at Summerwood?
Did it?
When they, yeah, when they did crossroads. The guy built a house in crossroads, and then they came in with the street, and it was basically coming right into his lot. And it caused, uh, you know, turned his lot into a, I think it turned him, turned him into a corner lot.
Yeah.
And, and they, so they were asking that they changed the, the road layout to accommodate, because he'd already bought his lot and had his home, and then they were bringing the road in, and it was basically gonna take his lot that was part of the development, was gonna turn his lot into a corner lot. And he was, he wasn't real happy about that, and rightfully so, because when he bought his lot, that wasn't there, and he bought it with the understanding that this, the next, his next, he was gonna have next door neighbors on both sides, and it turned out that he was, had, gonna end up being a corner lot, which is not what he wanted. So he asked for the developer to move the street down for, so there's a little bit of a jog between.
Did they do it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Boy, that's a.
He had an existing home, you know, where, where, where Forest Valley deadended into crossroads, and then there was, then that continued down. And then Lily Lane, and they, they moved Lily Lane down, like, I think, two lots, to give that guy the, so he, he, 'cause even the existing home is already there. So, yeah, I think that's a good idea, I think you need to do that, that, that would be a good, now, I mean, technically, the developer could've said, no, we're gonna keep it the way it is, and so is the way it goes, your lot's turning into a corner lot, whether you like it or not. It didn't work out that way, potentially, but, I mean, I, he had no real obligation to, to do it. I think this gives, there's an obligation, so that you don't, if you're, you're going into an existing development, you've gotta take into consideration how you're gonna impact the people that are already there, because when they built their homes, there was no road there, there was no other lots gonna be there. Not to say that they didn't know that was gonna develop, okay, obviously, they know it's a, it's, it's a buildable area, that there's gonna, they're gonna end up with neighbors at some point in time, but I think we need to be careful and not infringe on the people that have already built, and, and damage, you know, either A, the value of their property, or the aesthetics of what they've already built, you know, you wanna be careful on that. So I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
For some sort of requirement, or you're, you're, you're taking into consideration existing homes.
Mr. Chairman, I was combined, I was kinda blending C and D, so, Andy, I, I really agree with Andy on C, and the one I read D was like, then I got, I went back to read C. And I was like, what's my, did you do the same thing?
Yeah, I was saying that, yeah.
Yeah.
So we've gotta put that as a consider and not a requirement. Consider?
I'd make it a requirement.
I'd make it a requirement.
Yeah, I'd make it a requirement.
For C and D?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. So we're basically gonna combine the wording in C and D and make it a requirement. Okay?
I don't think that's too much task.
No, I don't think it is too much.
I think it's a, it's a benefit, I think you'll have less, it'll create less opposition from existing homeowners, because of the potential impact.
Right, and, and when you go from a developed neighborhood to, to the next piece of property that might be the RCD, more than likely, that RCD property that is gonna be wooded, so it might be able to get that, that woods up front, next to the right of way, and create that transition or the break between the two different neighborhoods, that would benefit, you know, the existing neighbors and the township as far as.
You'll have, I think you'll have less opposition from existing homeowners.
I think so.
To a development, if it's not gonna have this creative an impact on their development, or their homes, their property. So I think it's a good idea.
Rich, you on board?
Okay, good with it.
Okay. Okay, moving on to E. Require blocks of native planting lan, native plant landscaping and easements across several sublot frontages.
Not sure what that looks like.
Don't you have pictures, Heather?
I know, I was talking about.
Show us what that looks like?
Yeah.
For us visually impaired people that can't quite see, see that stuff?
What's native landscape going across?
Yeah.
Uh, you know what, I can bring you some photos of, between now and next, go on, maybe send you guys some images.
Yeah, that'd be.
What that might look like.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see, if you've got some examples, you could show us what that looks like.
Yeah, let me talk to Stormwater, and see if they've got some ideas, too, because there's some challenges, too, I think, with that, because then there's the learning curve of teaching people on how to even maintain those areas. Um, there's not only just putting them in, but now, now that they're here, what do I do, you know? Do I cut it tall, or spring, or, you know, so there's, there's a lot more to just acquire.
Yeah, Heather, I, I wrote, I agree, I wrote the word maintenance as soon as I read that.
Yeah.
It's like, and, and, and when, in, in, in the design circles, when we put in native landscaping, like on, on stormwater design features, it, they're just not maintained. If they're not maintained by the government, the, the private owners really at a, at a loss, and ends up filling it in, um, and it's gone.
And they can look really messy, um, like up here outside at Town Hall, by the terminal papers, and that, we have a rain garden technically there, and, um, sometimes it doesn't get maintained, because it's just no one, no one is the person that's supposed to maintain. The service department did it for a long time, and we had a transition where no one was doing it. Last summer, me and three other people at Town Hall pulled all the weeds, so, it was, you know, it's, they're challenging.
Well, see, you know, here's the problem you run into with that idea, um, in the real application, is that if you say, like, let's say, for instance, that the, the lots wooded, and you wanna have them leave some of the woods in the front, okay, while they build their house, soil compaction, landscaping, lawn being put in, trees start to die, now the homeowner's burden with having to have trees removed, that over time have died. I have a good friend that did that in Chardon, built a home in Chardon, and they have woods, they had all kinds of trees in the front, but because of the disruption, and they were just, they were just trees that were part of the woods, and because of the disruption of building a house, everything that went on. Those trees eventually died, and they had to, it cost them a lot of money to have somebody come in and take those trees down, because they were in his front yard, it could fall, at his house, they weren't gonna hit the neighbor's house, because they had, you know, a couple acres, but it was a big problem, and spent thousands of dollars out of his pocket to get rid of those, get rid of those, you know, trees.
That happened to me on Coal Ridge, I lived on Coal Ridge Road, Ryanhome, and, uh, big trees, and they died, two years later.
Right.
And I'm stuck with the bill.
Now, you're, yeah, exactly, now it's your problem. So I, you know, that's, and like you said, now, now that you, you have some native, so just throw the tree ID out, let's say that they, there's some native plants, now, now the homeowner's gotta figure out how to maintain that. And at, at some point in time, you know what they're gonna do, they're gonna go, I'm done with this, and they're just gonna rip it all out and plant grass, and then what? You know, so what if you really accomplish?
Andy, do you think the intent here by the writer was the HOA?
Right, because you got easements.
The easements across, so it's the HOA, because they're saying easements across the frontage, so I'm presuming it's not the homeowner. Is an idea, but then, now the HOA is burden with the responsibility, and who's the HOA?
The homeowners. Yeah, it all goes there.
So, so, it's a tough one. It's, it's, conceptually, it's nice, but to, to make sure it's, it's done and maintained.
To me, that's a stretch.
It is a stretch.
Yeah. I like the idea.
Doesn't sound like we're not even sure if we like, you kind of, you think, you kind of like the idea, most of us aren't sure what it would even look like, so, um.
Well, the, the one thing I wanna point out, do we all, do we always have to have the open area in the back of the lot?
That's what, no, I mean, that's what we're trying to encourage, to not happen.
Okay, so why can't we have an open area in the front of a lot, in the front of three or four, five or six lots, that's grass, woods, trees, plants?
That sounds great, so now we have the varying setbacks.
We already said that. We already said that, and, and keep the native landscaping, and A, if a tree dies, a tree dies.
So what we're seeing often is basically the developers come in, they, they clear the right of way, they clear the utility, and they clear all the lots, they leave nothing on the lots. So what you're maybe suggesting, it sounded like, is not allowing them to clear all the So what you're maybe suggesting, it sounded like, is not allowing them to clear all the lots and if there's woodlands there to leave them. I'm not sure what, you know, if that's marketable or... People are looking for that kind of thing. And then you have the issues about, people will be worried that the trees are gonna fall down.
I don't think I buy it.
When, um, okay. What's the name of that?
Eighteenth century village?
Eighteenth century village. Didn't he have some easements on the back of everybody's lots?
Yes. He has, um...
On the back?
Private preservation easements on the back of the lots. Yes. So they have open space that's dedicated, open space behind the lots. And then on the back of the lots, there's some gator structures that don't allow them to clear fifty to sixty feet to the rear of those lots. And I don't know how that came about.
Well, okay, here's, here's an idea. Here's an idea. Let's say for instance, again, we're not, you know, like, you take a look at Lily Lane. You look at Lily Farms. You go back there and look at Lily, take Lily Lane all the way to Six Oh Eight, or no, to Winchell. Winchell Run. That's all, I mean, it's just a big open field. There's not, there's woods, but it's...
Farmland, yeah.
Way back. Okay, so there's no woods there. Got pretty, you're pretty limited as to what you could do from an aesthetic standpoint because it's just flat, grass, nothing else. Right? Now you come to Summerwood, and you look like where I'm at, everybody's backyard was woods. There was woods all the way to the street. Okay, so you cleared the light right of way. And then maybe what we do is we say, "Only clear what's necessary for the house and leave the woods, you know, leave the wood line, you know, at the back, at the, where it's, to a reasonable distance from the home and not clear to the pins." See? And that's where I think, that's where you can get some advantage of the woods and the open space. Because even though I own back into the woods, I've got woods in my backyard. Okay, I can't clear them. You know, the developer is limited how far back he can go clearing out those woods. And that leaves a lot of the natural woods there. Because when you start picking and choosing, and then you start to cause problems with the existing trees because of the trees, they don't have the root system, they don't have any, they're typically not good quality hardwoods. There's a lot of scrap, a lot of tute of trees and cottonwoods and, you know, things that just are not good quality woods. That if you really push it back with a development, you know, with a building standpoint, they're gonna die. So, but if you stopped and you didn't really infringe into the, deep into those areas where some of those trees were at, they'll continue to live.
So to your point, Herb Fine did that in the Mountainside Farms.
Right.
Where I live. And it's a forty foot, forty foot conservation easement on the rear of all the lots.
But we don't make it a conservable.
He did.
Don't even make it. The person owns it. It's their property. It's private property. They own it.
But he did it.
But you stop where the developer clears the trees. And it's because in a lot of cases, like Heather said, they just clear the, you know, clear the right of way and clear where the house, just go right back to where the property pins are and just mow everything down to the, to the back. Make them stop somewhere. If it's a half acre lot, if you can stop them, you know, you got your, where your house is gonna go, the footprint of the house. And then they only go back so many more feet and they stop. And then that keeps a lot of those woods intact.
You're talking only in the back, not the front.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's kind of what I get.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Let's say, um, Rich, you're, yeah, Mountainside Farms does have a forty foot
Conservation.
restriction on the back of the lot where they're not supposed to clear. Um, I can tell you from the zoning inspector's position on that private deed restriction, it's not really being enforced by, um, I don't know, if the developer at this point was still the...
Hey, I was the president of the HOA. I had to enforce it. So, yeah, and...
So they're not, I'm gonna tell you, the last couple houses that were built on Burgundy, they allowed them to clear right up to the edge. They allowed them to clear right to the...
I don't know why developer, I don't know.
That is the only thing that we can enforce from a township because it's a private deed restriction. But if it was part of an RCD, then we could enforce that. And yeah, maybe you, you know, right now, we have a thirty foot rear yard setback in the RCD. Maybe you say you can't clear twenty feet of that, which might actually give you a better lot design because who really wants a thirty foot rear yard? They're not doing that. They're doing sixty, sixty feet. Other than on Eagle Point, there were a couple lots and it was because of the shape of the land. They was trying to squeeze in as many number of lots as he could. He did thirty foot rear yards on like five, five lots.
Right.
You know, that's a good idea. Something we should think about. It wasn't even on, I don't think it was on this list of things to do, but, you know...
Because where my, when I built my home, I was right at the, kind of the edge of the open space. It was like a sliver of open space. And as it goes further down behind the other lots, it gets wider. So what I did was when I built my house, I told the builder, "Don't clear it to the pins." I said, "Only clear what you have to. Leave the rest of the woods intact." That gave me more of a buffer up against what was there. And gave, now, when I, when I sit in my kitchen, I look, I can't hardly see any of the homes behind me because there's not only the sliver of the open space that's there, but then there's also that additional probably thirty, forty feet on my property that they didn't clear. That gives me the extra notice of all the trees that were there. Nothing's died off. Everything's stuck. I've got shag bar kitry back there. I've got all kinds of other trees. Very nice. And so I think if you stopped the developer from clearing all the way to the back to the pins, that would really make a nice, you know, break. It gives you that more privacy. Gives you that open, you know, that more of a wooded lot type of a look than if they just straight back to the pins.
Can you make it, you can make it a requirement for the developer? Can you make it a requirement for the owner though, when they move in later and decide they want to take it all the way back to the pins?
No, because it's private property. It's their property. Unless you do, unless you put it, unless you do...
P U B, when RCD is like a P U B, we can enforce all those, whatever restrictions on the development that they have.
I like the idea. I have the same thing. Only my sliver back there is about two hundred feet. And then I have about fifty feet of my own woods. And I like that because I can't see anything. But somebody else might say, "I want a bigger backyard."
Both houses on both sides? I mean, you're all the way back, but I've got a nice little section of woods behind me.
Yeah, yeah.
And just, you know, the tree clearing companies that come out, it is way cheaper for them to just clear pin to pin than to go in and selectively, you know, have things down. So that's something that you guys really feel strongly about.
I feel strongly about it because my property is like that. When Ryan put the development in, we all have woods all behind us. And my stakes are way back there. And occasionally I had to take a tree down because it died, but I mean, that was me. And that was fine. But right now, especially when summertime comes, I don't even see the neighbors behind me. Trees all growing up and everything. And I have my privacy back, really. So I'm in favor of that myself.
So we're gonna not put anything with respect to E in there because we don't really know what it is?
We're gonna hold off on that.
Okay, move on to F. Break up the long, straight right of way, which contribute to high density appearance. You can see too many houses from one spot on the road. Require bends in the street or require permit, require or permit islands and mid-street split into two-way, two one-way lanes. These would be unique design features and add character and value to the neighborhood. Requirement, consideration.
I'd take consideration. It's nice, but...
And I think most of them coming through are really the curved, the curved highways. They're not straight through.
Yeah.
Even though the houses that you see are all in a line coming down.
Yep.
But, okay, so we're gonna make that one consider. Okay. G. Require that, now, this says require, that some amount of the required open space that's put in the right of way so it is more visible and accessible and reduces a dense appearance. Make it more obvious that there is open space preserved in the subdivision, not just open space backlands. In some cases, this increases length and cost of the street improvements, but not always. Put some open space where it has visual impact as a subdivision design feature so it looks like an open space subdivision.
Sounds very similar to A, that we're talking about.
I was just gonna say, that's very, that's very close to A.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could probably...
Combine it.
Combine it with A?
Yeah.
I think that put the curvy streets in with the every other, some of the open lots would be a good solution.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I took one statement out of G, if you combine it with A. And that was where the I, E, put open space where it has visual impact as a subdivision design feature. Locate open space where it has visual impact. That's really the message, right?
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, there's a lot of words there, but that's the message.
Okay.
My takeaway from reading.
I like that.
Uh, the other comment I had was, it went on to talk about building envelopes and building areas. So if I recall, the current RCD allows an accessory building. Am I correct?
Yes.
One, two hundred square feet.
Two hundred, yeah.
For the individual sublot?
Yes.
You can have one detached accessory building.
Right, right. So this is suggesting some limits to building area footprints to increase environmental protection. I don't know that that, I'm just kind of saying, okay, so if that was the, if that's the intent, but then when we say, "Go ahead and build an accessory building," are we kind of contradicting ourselves? I'm not sure of that. I just raised the question.
Can we specify building envelopes or footprints?
Or footage.
I, I think if we put it in the zoning stating that through this process, that the township has the ability to do that and dictate that on a plan that they could. Kind of like what we were talking about, like, don't clear the last twenty feet of the lot. Might be some way that, you know, if there's a wetland maybe close to that where we thought it would benefit that wetland, by not doing that, we could require them to do that. I think it would obviously have to be agreed to, you know, as part of the rezonant and approving that preliminary plan. You know, the developer would have to agree to that with the township if you're wanting to do that in certain sublots. I don't know.
You kind of know what I'm asking. So if you had like thirty or forty small lots in an RCD and then thirty of them decide to put up accessory buildings, you suddenly lose the whole intent, I think, of preserving, I don't know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I don't restrict the ability to have an accessory building to two hundred square feet. Might be difficult to say you can't, but...
Yeah, especially since I'm planning to build one.
A lot of developers, they put in their homes now have a, it looks like a third garage, but it's not. It's for their, you know, their equipment, that they use it for. I still have a couple of friends of mine that build homes like that.
Golf cart.
It's a two-car garage per se. And it looks like there's another mini garage next to it.
It's called a tandem garage.
Yeah, and it's just used for their lawnmowers and bikes and stuff like that.
That's to the main, the main, oh, that's a lot. They call them tandem garage.
Yeah, and they don't have this shed.
Yeah, yeah. Three car, they call like a three-car tandem garage.
You could put a third car back to you.
Yeah. They could technically put a third car, right.
In fact, Quilty's doing that in Quail Hollow.
Yeah, it's tandem garage. That's becoming a popular...
Becoming very popular now. And that's where they store their stuff.
A lot of people that don't want to build a storage barn.
Shed, yeah.
But you gotta, I mean, to me, it's kind of hard to stop somebody, you know, prevent somebody from building a storage barn on their property, you know, with, you know, when you have a riding mower and...
Yeah, that's...
You don't have much of, if you, you know, and then a lot of houses, a lot of people don't build three-car garages. They build a two-car garage. Where are you gonna put all that stuff? Now your two-car garage is really a one-car garage.
Great, great.
So...
Or in the way that the RCD is running now, they're... The only, people can still do pools, sheds up to two hundred square feet. But if you do a gazebo and they can, everything else that you could do in a conventional subdivision, the only main really difference is their, the maximum square footage of that accessory building.
Okay.
So like in an R1, you could do up to thousand and twenty-four square feet. So...
Yeah, okay.
Doesn't take long to get up to two hundred square feet.
Oh, sure does.
So I don't know how, like with H specifically, how you guys would... I think the township would want the ability to just, to possibly do these things. But it would be, it'd be on a case-by-case basis.
So what, what's the intent here? You can't build a mansion? I mean, you're gonna hit all your right of ways on your side and front and back.
I think it's right here where it says, "Where it increases environmental protection." Or I don't know, I don't know how it would improve the subdivision line in appearance. I'm not sure. Any thoughts on that? Oh, unless, unless, yeah, unless maybe there was a way you could preserve those foreground woodlands or something like that a lot. I don't... I guess maybe that would be a, kind of back to what we talked about earlier. You had sublots ahead that were wooded. Wouldn't we want to say, well, sublot three, you gotta keep these woods here or restrict people clearing that? I don't know. I don't know if the township is to be there or not.
Think maybe we can get some advice from like the Soil and Water? Because they know about, you know, things like environment protection, all that good stuff. Maybe see if they have the suggestion, possibly if we incorporate this.
I can...
See maybe what their interpretation might be? For this consideration. I don't know, just a thought.
I'm stumped on this one. I don't know what we can do.
Yeah. That's why I said maybe they might give us some guidance.
Okay.
Take a, let them take a look at the verbiage and just to see what they say.
If someone, we have square footies requirements for the, for the, for the house. And somebody says, "I'm gonna build a twenty-four hundred square foot colonial." Okay, that's not too bad for a footprint. Now, the next guy wants to build a twenty-four hundred square foot ranch. That's a much bigger footprint, but it's still within the restrictions of the twenty-four hundred square feet. So is that what we're looking at, the footprint?
That's what they're suggesting.
So we're saying you can't build a twenty-four hundred square foot ranch? I don't know if that would even fit on a quarter acre lot in that design. Quarter acre lot is what, ten thousand square feet? So you have, or twelve or eleven thousand square feet? So you have a twenty-four hundred square foot house.
Right, so we're almost like talking about like lot coverage, like maximum lot coverage. Like in rural districts, we have a maximum lot coverage seventy percent. Super happy. But residential coverage, no maximum lot coverage. Is that, was there kind of a threshold a little bit here or?
I don't know. I don't know.
We don't have any maximum lot coverages in any of our residential districts. A lot more of rural townships do. I'm not sure if any of the, Lake County, like Geico County, they have very low lot, maximum lot coverage, like ten percent. But their minimum lot size is probably...
But your side yard clearances are gonna dictate the layout, the layout of the house anyway.
Yeah.
You got ninety foot, if you had a ninety foot wide lot...
With ten on either side.
Yeah, well, ten foot side yard clearance, that significantly impacts what kind of a house you could put down. Because, you know, even if you, if you found a design that you liked and say you wanted to customize a little bit, push out some walls, you might have some difficulty pushing it out on the sides because you start to...
You gotta go back.
Yeah, you start to infringe on the side yard clearances with the driveway and other things, you know. So you gotta be careful.
What do you want to do with H?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I'll put an extrude.
Okay, okay. Let's move on to I. We're not gonna do H.
So we're gonna eliminate it?
Well, later consideration.
Later consideration, okay.
Okay, I, require environmental restoration and seasonal maintenance plans for open space. Which is disturbed land such as old cornfield, blah, 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 blah. Wouldn't that be in the HOA part?
Would think.
The requirement to maintain the open space?
Well, they are required to maintain it, but they need direction on how they're gonna maintain it and the township has to, I think what they're suggesting is that they should be required to submit their maintenance plan for review and approval.
Right, right.
That way, moving forward, everyone's on the same page about how it's gonna be maintained.
As the township, what's our ability to enforce that?
I think if we, well, that's a good legal question, but I... Abby?
Can you repeat it again? It's from over here.
Yeah, so Abby, if the township required a... Yeah, so Abby, if, if, um, the township required a developer to submit like a maintenance plan for their open space and we approve that as part of their, their RCD, their rezon, their application, do we, who, do we then have the ability to enforce that?
To the extent it would be able to enforce anything else in the RCD plan, so yeah.
So then let me take that to the next level, because that's something we want to be involved in trying to enforce. You're one person, you wanna, you wanna be supervising when they can cut wildflower fields?
And I think honestly, the enforcement only comes in when it's a problem.
Typically.
With that kind of stuff. When someone's calling, saying, "Why does this look like this?" or, or something like that, then it's almost complaining at that point. But I, I, personally, I think it's a good idea to have them provide that to us.
I think so too.
Like when we did, when we approved early farms, that was an old farm field, and we didn't have this requirement in there, and it was me trying to get the developer, like, "What are you gonna do? What are you gonna..." You know, we went through lots of different ideas of what he thought he was gonna do to restore the open space, and it would've been nice to have a hard thing in here, like, "You shall submit this and get it, you know, approved," and it was, "Okay, first we're gonna do a meadow," and then I said, "Okay, well, where's the maintenance plan?" You know, consulting with Soil and Water, I'm, because I'm not, you know, we're not experts on this kind of stuff, so I think we do that, we wanna require them to the ability to have, you know, Soil and Water to help us review it, or whoever, our experts with our, our legal team, but I think it's something you'd wanna consider to add. Um, there's probably some other farmland over on the east side of the township that potentially could be rezoned to RCD, so, you know, this could be something that would actually happen in the future. Still got some farmland that, they, they might want to not keep farming, so it'll probably come up again.
Okay, I'm good. If we wanna require that?
Yes, yes.
I see that issue, but...
Uh, let's see, J, require some native plant landscaping in somewhere all front yards.
I say let's move to K.
Good idea, Rich.
No, sir. But I think we...
Yeah.
Yeah, we kinda hit that one with that.
Yep.
I have native Concord rocks.
Okay, K, where the environmental, where the environment benefits, consider allowing a limited number of non-frontage lots, or consider limited common driveways. For example, these design features may be acceptable if it is pushed, if it pushed open space beyond forty percent.
Common driveways, better like your neighbor, for sure.
I, I don't, personally, I don't like K at all. In an RCD. I think that kinda destroys the intent in my eye. So, but...
Mr. Chairman, I've run into this issue many times, and I, I get, I've heard of pushback from public safety forces when common driveways, they don't know where, which, where they're going, and then mail delivery, I've heard of that, service, it just creates, I think, some confusion to, especially for emergency response, but I've only, I'm not expert on that, but I've only heard those types of comments, not being in the field.
And then you get down to who's gonna maintain it if you have a bad neighbor, for example, or they start, you know, leaving their cars or whatever in the, in the area, and there could be a lot of problems that could pop up because of that, you know.
I mean, you, how many, I'll put it this way, if you want a condo development, even, most condos don't have common driveways, right? They have their own individual driveway.
Even a little separation, yeah.
Might be a little sliver of ground between it, but there, there, you don't even, even, in a lot of condo developments, you don't see common driveways. I just don't like the idea of common driveway. That's opening up a big can of worms.
Yeah. I agree.
Heather's gonna have enough time dealing with all the restoration of seasonal property. That's gonna keep her busy as it is. Now she's gonna have to settle, she's gonna have to settle driveway disputes.
Yeah.
I'm not a fan.
I'm not either.
Neither.
Okay.
Remove that.
Forget K, we're not gonna do K. L, require at least one outfront meaningful open space feature for every ten or so sublots. Isn't that what we said in A?
Yeah, that kinda rolls into A and G.
And, yeah, right.
So that's kind of a part of that, that whole...
Okay, M, consider encouraging more dwellings oriented toward the preserved features. Use of a wetland, stream, valley, meadow, rather than always the public street to Scott's lawn to front door the house better. Now, that, that to me, that one fits an RCD. Cannot have, what's it, what'd it say? Public street to Scott's lawn, front door. And that's with every house lined up. Put the driveway all the way in the back, like you have that one in your development. But have more of them, not just one, but have more of them. That way, the house, and yeah, put, put the front of that, yeah, put the front of the house towards the woods. I don't know. So...
Well, those are the things I brought up in our last month's meeting about where we vacation in Kiowa.
Yep.
That, you know, it's a natural preserve, but all the homes are staggered in such a way. I mean, this is a beautiful area to be in, for one thing, and because of that, yeah, you're, 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 front of your house might be looking at a stream that's, you know, out in the front yard with the ducks and the geese and...
I looked at that after you mentioned it though, Frank, those are like five-acre lots with three-million-dollar houses.
Well, they're pretty big.
They're not quarter-acre lots.
No, they're not quarter-acre lots, but they, when you come onto the, there are, like apartments that are, that are part of it too, that are set up that way, so. But I mean, with that kind of flexibility, it really makes it, you really feel good when you live in an area like that. I mean, we enjoyed our vacations there just because of how nice it looked. And this is what we're trying to achieve here, a development that people just, you know, love to get out there and be able to see and the land itself and nature, and not necessarily look at your neighbor's side door or garage or whatever it might be, so.
I think that one goes with what, with what Frank said last week, last month, with respect to, uh, being flexible. And I think, I, I think that one should go in as a consider. You know, depending upon the layout, if you've got a, a stream or a basin, orient a house so that you can see that, you can see the ducks and the geese fly in or whatever. If it's further back, then orient the house that way. I, I think it should be a consider, that's all.
When you consider though that we only require twenty acres to be an RCD, if you had a twenty-acre section of land, you're only able to have so much freedom to do that kind of design in twenty acres and still get houses in there and streets in there and so forth. You know, I don't think you could apply it in that case as well as if you had a hundred acres.
Agreed, agreed.
But it could be consideration to your...
A consider, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Consideration.
Yeah.
Like looking handy, said he's got a neighbor that has his house way back there and he probably enjoys...
Well, if it helps him encourage creativity, then it's good.
Exactly. That, that's what we're trying to do.
Uniqueness. Okay. That's a consider then. N, require plantings in center of cul-de-sacs.
I, good idea.
Yes.
Concur.
Okay, that's an easy one, okay. O, consider requiring that four-way street intersections must be roundabouts with interior planted.
Here we go.
I like it, but I don't think, I knew he was gonna say that, I knew.
I for one love roundabouts, so I might be in the minority, but roundabouts...
No, I don't think so. We're, we're nearing a plurality here.
Oh, yeah, roundabouts, I mean, again, in the engineering circles, it is, it is the right thing to do to move traffic, and they just gotta get used to it. It's really...
You got an ally, Rich.
I do, good job, Rich.
I like the riches. You don't, I hate them. I hate them. I think they're the stupidest thing in the world, but that's me.
Well, think about it in, in an RCD where you've got twenty-five mph, right? It's, the speed is down. It's really perfect around stop.
Yeah.
At a four-way stop, it really, move the traffic, uh, don't waste the fuel, keep moving.
It does slow you down, that's a given, that's for sure.
It's, you proceed with caution, you don't stop.
You proceed with caution, rather than our street, we have two streets that, uh, that have stop signs, and even if our own neighbors don't even stop, they go right straight through it, and I've seen close calls from the other street coming in. At least something like that would make them, you know, slow down at least to look, so.
I'm rapidly becoming the minority. But that's okay.
Go to, go to England, Andy.
I'm a man of conviction, I am not going to be swayed.
Wait, I didn't talk to Rich beforehand, just so you know.
He didn't, he didn't call me, but go to England and they're all over.
Oh, Europe is all, I mean, Europe is all like that.
I drove them in Thailand, it wouldn't be like Europe.
Yeah.
Okay, I think O is four to one.
Encourage it.
Okay.
Encourage, yes. I don't think that we can require that.
No.
No, probably.
But yeah, that's something you wanna...
That'd be really cool though, if we could encourage it.
But there again, no...
Andy, can you imagine a Forest Valley in Summerwood with a roundabout?
No.
That'd be great.
Why not?
That's his intersection, so.
I know.
You wouldn't like to just roll out of bed and then roll down the street?
I'm good with the way it is, a four-way stop is fine. Took me a while to get used to that.
Yeah, they, it was a two-way originally, I was like...
It took me a while to get used to the four-way stop. I caught myself more than one occasion rolling right through the four-way stop.
I would require it.
Mr. Gallway, Chris Gallway was involved.
Oh, yeah.
I'll share the video of the roundabout that I have in my repertoire.
Okay.
Car flying through the air.
Okay, Andy.
Okay, uh, P, require natural woodland plantings on corner side lots.
Cue. Sorry.
Is that part of the...
I think there's a couple over, like, when we looked at Concord Ridge, I think there was a, a corner that happened to just be that way, um, so, um, you know, visual, that's another just way to bring more woodlands up from, I don't know.
Well, some, a lot of developments have that just as an enhancement coming into the development. It looks nice 'cause they put the name of the development, for example, out there where it's, you know...
You see, it's woodland, it's not leaving it, it's woodland plantings, not, not woodlands, there's a difference. You're asking a plant there and not leave natural. I would rather see it leaving natural, you know, leave, for entrances egress and into the development, leaving some of those corner lots from the main road, leave those just natural.
And I think we addressed that in another point, yeah.
Yep, those, those buffer areas, yep.
So with this one, where are you guys at? I'm sorry.
P.
So, no, I'm sorry, did you decide on that, or are you still talking?
I, I think we, I think we've got that covered in the, in another bullet point, don't we, or no? Isn't that covered in something?
No, more of a transition into the new neighborhood.
Right, okay. I would say, I would just get rid of plantings. Or, or include natural woodland slash planting, maybe, or, you know, not, not just say plantings, but natural woodlands are possible.
I, I was confused by it, Andy, because was the intent to the homeowner, to the lot, not to the right-ofway? Talking about the lot or the right-ofway? If you start saying it's the right-ofway and you're restricting, you know, bringing in utilities, it just, it doesn't work.
Right.
That's why I was a little confused, it was saying you'd make that part of this property. The corner, the corner lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On corner side lots.
That's how I, I tell you.
It was a corner side lot, side lot. Yeah, that's...
That's why I was, that's why I asked it, because I didn't understand.
I'm not really, I'm not sure if I understood it either, no. I had thought of the intent was, "Don't build a house on the corner lot, just leave it woods," but then we read it again.
I didn't know what it meant.
Hey, Abby, or, um, can you, um, read for us since we can't interpret this last, uh, recommend, you know, recommendation? I don't know, maybe, one of the recommendations was to require natural woodland plantings on corner side lots? Any thoughts on, on that?
Um, I don't have that text in front of me.
Okay.
Can you read it one more time?
Require natural woodland plantings on corner side lots. It's okay.
Can we just?
I don't know.
Pass on that one? Yeah.
Okay, yes, doesn't seem, we got the problem either.
Now, anybody have anything else? This is, this was just recommendations coming from the people who did the comprehensive plan in Twin Cities.
I have one, Hiram. This is in this article that I downloaded today, but, uh, basically, if a developer wants to come in with an RCD, uh, plan today, I don't know, they come in with a pretty thorough plan, pretty well done. And, and this article brings out a good point, it says, "The review process can be streamlined and, and doesn't involve greater risk or time on the developer's part if you could just come in with a sketch plan." In other words, the first appearance before zoning would be a sketch plan, and it, it wouldn't have all the details on it, but it would say, "This is what I have in mind, and this is how I plan to do it." And we could then pick it apart at that first initial discussion to say, "Yeah, we like that, but have you considered this? Or you need to consider that?" Before the developer spends a lot of time and money developing a, a real, a real plan that shows maybe even utilities, or even to the extent of the ones we're looking at lately. And, and the sketch plan could be something that we would tell, "You could just come in with a sketch plan to begin with." Hand us a sketch plan with certain amount of detail that shows what you wanna do." Because they really talk about the cost, the engineering cost, for all the engineering solutions that a developer has to put into a plan. So if you could just do the first pass with a sketch plan, they get all of our feedback on it, and then they go develop the real thing. Then when they come in with a, a more formal plan, we're not gonna waste a lot of time and effort on both sides. That's just something I thought made a lot of sense, and if you read that article, you'll see that in there, but just a suggestion that we consider a sketch plan. Would that be doable, wouldn't it, Heather?
Well, the, the way that our text is written right now, um, we do call us, call it a sketch plan, so when, when they submit their, um, for their pre-application meeting, um, they're required to submit a sketch plan of their yield plan.
I've never seen one.
Well, and, and this is where, what people have submitted has varied, so, um, a lot, sometimes they come in, they're fully engineered, the yield plan and the preliminary plan, the RCD plan, they've gone through the process of showing everything, you know, or the appearance of being fully engineered. We have a pre-app tomorrow night that's scheduled that hasn't taken it that far, it's more of a sketch plan, a drawing of, this is, you know, maybe how we could do the, the yield plan, and this is how we might do the RCD plan. So, looking at those plans, they have not been fully developed, and I, I would think that they haven't spent too much money on engineering of it, and, and there'd still be that flexibility.
If we've got it, then good. It's just, maybe it's not clear.
Right, maybe, I can take a look at that.
Clarify that, yeah. Okay, that's all I had. That's all I had there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I concur, I thought where you might be going, Rich, was the suggestion that Heather sent to us about eliminating the yield plan requirement altogether. that Heather sent to us about eliminating the yield plan requirement altogether. I am all over that, I know I'm new to the board, but, and I just saw my first yield plan and I'm all over this idea. It has a lot of, what you just said, Rich, was about the, the. Yield plans, unless they're fully developed by an engineer, you just, you're starting to throw darts and, and it gets to be, I don't wanna say, I have it, it's argumentative and debating, but to develop an RCD with a certain prescription, be it 40% open space, and eliminate the yield plan and then put all these design features in the RCD and then, and then make it an evaluation from sketch plan to write for that RCD that recognizes the water resources being preserved on this, on the property and how, how it's going to meet the intent of the RCD.
That's like delivery.
I, I thought, when I, that's why I, I said, yeah, so anyhow.
Okay. I think yield plans a lot of times are just an exercise in futility.
I, I, I think.
They're not realistic, they cram as much in there as they possibly can using every inch of space.
Yes.
To try to qualify for as much density as long as is possible and I think, you know, I mean, in many cases, the yield plans are not even close to what's reality. I mean, if they, if they were going to build it as, as this existing zone, they wouldn't be able to.
They wouldn't be able to do it.
A lot of times what they do with a yield plan. And, you know, and I, I think what we do with the yield plan is we, we kind of create that problem by, by making them do that because they know that the more they can, the more they can show, the more they can, the more.
Yeah.
Most they can qualify for. So, we kind, we kind of, we, it's like we created a monster by doing that. Maybe we take that, we don't, we just.
I think you're right. This article says it's a disincentive to the developers to have a yield plan.
And they're, I think they've been using it against, because then they say, oh, well then I should have X number of lots because of stuff I can't. And it's like, well, it's a possible maximum, you know, density and then, then you're gonna argue that. Is that, I mean, if that's a rub, you gotta wanna seriously explore about how we might get, just get rid of that.
That's why I brought it up, I.
Yep, I agree. I would not, you wouldn't get much opposition from me on that.
I could hear that.
The yield plan to me is just a really, it's a, it's a kind of, it's just a fraud. There really isn't a lot of cases of fraud on, you know, you know that it's not real, you know it's not gonna happen. But, yeah, here we are, we're looking at it, trying to, you know, it's like, come on, why even go through it? Eliminate it.
I agree.
Any thoughts on that?
No, I agree. I agree with the board because by doing away with that, it would encourage this kind of development really in itself, where they don't have to go through that. And there again, we're supposedly supposed to review all these on its merit. And that's what we should be looking at on its merit. Rather than try to come up with a yield plan that sometimes, like Gary Owen says, is almost very difficult to try to achieve.
We're already controlling the maximum density of the, of the site by saying, so much has to be in open space and then here are your minimum lots, I think so, we take a look at our minimum open space requirements. And, and do we wanna say a hundred, forty percent or?
At the end of the day, that's really all that matters, right?
I, I think so, Andy, yeah, I think so. You had, you had written in such as 40%. Then I looked at your statistics and they were all between 40 and 50%.
They were all top.
They're all, they're all in the 40, the last four that you gave us, we're there. It seems like a very reasonable approach when you think of a piece of property that 40% of it, we're already saying, okay, you can't develop, I mean, it's.
Well, I think, and what does the yield plan accomplish in that? Nothing.
Nothing.
What is the, what is the ultimate accomplishment of a yield plan? There is, there is really no benefit to the yield plan. Because at the end of the day, on an RCD, it's number of lots, open space.
Open space.
Right? And our goal is maximize open space, right? Try to keep a, a density under control. And the yield plan really is, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a non-starter in a lot of those cases.
Yep.
So why, why, why put that in the process? Because it could get crazy.
Possibly with that change coupled with requiring them to submit like an existing conditions plan of the site at the time of pre-app. Come in with your existing conditions, show us what's on the property, where are the woodlands, where is all the environmental, why is it worthy of preservation? Show us your sketch, your initial layout, not fully engineered, but here's the areas we wanna preserve, here's how we think we're gonna do the last, initial, you know, look at the township before they move forward with their pre-zone. And then if they decide to move forward, that's when they submit their formal application. Just keep in mind, this is all the option of the developer, no one has to do this. But I think that we definitely wanna, this is a, a big change that we'd be proposing, so we'd wanna get a little feedback, obviously from the developers, but once we have something a little bit more solid to show them like, well, this is what we're proposing, you know, whatever.
Invite them or have a separate meeting or whatever.
I mean, I've heard from a couple of them that have done RCDs lately that they, they struggle with the whole yield plan and the whole process and how much effort they put into it, you know? I think that streamlining it for, for us also helps.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, I think we've done a lot tonight, I don't know if you wanna get into the micro-distillery stuff, I, you know, I can work on that again for next month. Mr. Chairman, if you like, I, you know, I'd like to figure out, you know, now that we have a good idea of where we're going with some of these design features and changing the whole process.
That's fine.
Good, good.
So we're gonna table the micro-distilleries?
We'll just continue that on for next month.
Okay.
Oh, man.
Well, you gotta be here, you gotta be here.
I, we can talk about it briefly, I don't know how many I'd like to give you tonight, but, you know, last month and I.
Heather gave you bogus information to log in, just so you're aware, it was not right, everything, I couldn't, I tried, tried joining the meeting remotely and I just kept getting, the meeting hasn't started?
Yeah, somehow.
I know, they're talking about something right now, I know they are.
Andy and I did talk a couple days after and I kinda updated them and we were discussing the, if you're trying to recall, what we've done with the distillery once, eight thousand and Andy reminded us that.
Yeah, when we originally came up with that quantity, it was because we wanted to, because it was a thought process going into the Gateway District and we were wanting to have something that would enable like counter service, walk-in service, things of that nature, bar, restaurant, you know, tasting room, things of that nature. When you go, when you went beyond that eight thousand gallon limit, then it became, it was a hard and fast distillery or a hard and fast brewery, which would negate the ability to have those types of facilities, you're, you're just a brewery.
And that was per the Ohio.
Yeah, that was per Ohio, yeah, that was per Ohio. So we, that's why we dropped, we dropped the limit to eight thousand. That way you could have a tasting room, you could have a bar, you could have retail where people could come in and buy beer or buy liquor or whatever you had, you know, on site. And that would be in, in, kind of in consistent idea behind the Gateway District and what we were gonna do there. With the, with them increasing that amount now, there would be no reason to cap it, we would wanna keep it to whatever the limit is and raise that because obviously the more they can make, the better for their business. But it'd still be able to encourage the, you know, the counter service, walk-up service, retail part of the, of the distillery and/or brewery or combination thereof. So that was the, that was the reason, originally with the, the cap on that was to encourage, to allow foot traffic and be, you know, and, and customers walking in and buying things. So that's how that, that's why we came up. But then, now that they've increased that number from, to a higher number than eight thousand, I think we should raise our ceiling to equal whatever the, the, you know, the laws are, the state guidelines are.
Can I ask a question, Andy? So does the law, the state law, I tried to research it a little bit, but does the state law then allow the distillery to be part adjunct to a restaurant and a bar, not just walk-up service, but to serve it in their restaurant or in their bar? If a distillery like.
Well, I don't think there was, if I remember right, there wasn't a delineation between a bar, a restaurant serving food as well as product or just product. I don't think there really, it was, eight thousand was the cap, anything beyond that, you weren't allowed to have anything, you know, you weren't, it was basically you were a brewery or a distillery.
So is this proposal just a distillery or a distillery with a bar?
Well, we, with, I don't know that necessarily it has to be a bar, I mean, even if you just have retail space where you, say you have, you know, you've got a distillery in the back and you've got retail space in the front where people can come in and shop for, and buy beer or, you know, that you're making on-prem, you know, that type of thing.
The, the outfit that had, of course, the township, their, their vision was the production area and a tasting room with a retail.
Right.
Okay.
So.
That tasting room.
Restaurant thing wasn't gonna happen, it was just all gonna be.
I see, okay, okay.
But we did have a percentage for the tasting room?
We had a, currently you have to, it's an 80/20 split, so at least 20%, 20% of your, your building area has to be devoted to this retail component or restaurant tasting room type use. Because we don't wanna restrict distillery in our town center or in these other districts that we have put them in.
And, and that would remain if we increased the number?
I think that.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's not gonna affect the 80/20 split, it's just gonna just affect the quantity, the volume that it could produce.
That's what I thought. Just to clear everything up.
The other thing that, you know, that just taking a look at this brought, brought to my attention too, was the fact that if it does then become a full distillery or brewery, do we want to allow that in an industrial district? That's something we consider as specifically. So saying you start in the town center and you're doing successful and you wanna expand and you wanna stay in Concord, could you add a, a separate production facility down on discovery?
Which has happened. It happens.
So that.
Where there's multiple buildings, yeah, there's multiple buildings on a site where they've got, you know, they, they started out with their, their brewery slash tasting area, bar thing, and then all of a sudden they really become wildly popular and they decide they wanna really get into full-time production, so they build another building on their, you know, on their site or whatever, or close to it that, you know, is just really dedicated, you know, to, to just distilling or brewing.
And that's, that's kind of like, you know, looking at the city of Willoughby's Code, what they've done, they, they did a really nice job kind of grouping those together and defining them very clearly, here are the production limits and then once you exceed those, you're no longer a micro-distillery or brewery, you're, you know, then you're a brewer, you're a distillery and then you're all over in this area of our city. Which I thought was, was something that's a factor in my consideration.
Okay.
Yes, this, looking at Willoughby's Code as well, you know, they were requiring, you know, that the facility provide, you know, documentation if requested, you know, showing how much production that they actually did during the year. And I think they would probably only do that if there was some problem or issue, but we would probably really wanna request that too because you put these limits in, but you've got to, you know, now with the volume.
I think it's controlled pretty tightly by the state too, though.
Yeah, well, and I know that they, they report all of that to the state, so it isn't anything that would be, you know, you could just get a copy of that document.
Right.
If you needed to, there was some concern that they were way out of hand and not complying with the conditional use permit that might have been granted and not some number of gallons. So there were some good ideas from some of the other resolutions that I've looked at.
Anything else on the micro-distilleries right now?
Love to see one come to the township. I would, I think it'd be great, I think it'd be great, I think it would be a great addition.
Perfect demographic here.
Absolutely. Micro-distillery, micro-brewery, I think that would be a big hit.
Okay, moving on. Two, item two on their new business, approval of minutes from our January meeting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a correction to the minutes. Page thirty-seven, lines thirteen through seventeen and nineteen through twenty-two were quoted to me and I didn't say them. And I lived in Stark County and I didn't, so I don't know who's.
Oh, that was by Ashley, Ashley Garkar.
So I think that those should be changed to Ashley saying those, I had two quotes there that weren't mine, but.
So that's not Mr. Peter.
Line thirteen and line nineteen, starting at both. Other than that, no other.
Any other comments on the minutes? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion that we approve the minutes from the January meeting with the exceptions noted.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain, abstain, okay. We have three ayes and two abstains. Right? Correspondents' report. Frank, anything?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing.
No.
Rich?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Rich?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I have nothing also, so there is nothing. Audience participation?
Let it be noted that there isn't anybody in the audience because we've had issues in the past sometimes, whatever, that was brought up, you know, about how many people were here, how come there wasn't any important stuff?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
No, there's no one else online.
Nobody online.
Okay.
So we have nothing for the audience. Next meeting is March second.
March, oh, what happened to January?
It's wrong.
We were here.
Do I have a motion for a German?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye, here we go. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very, very much.